We have a forum, so I'd like to call to order the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Meeting is being held at 91 Sawyer Street, Willcut Commons in person. Also be watched virtually on Cohasset 143, on the Zoom link at the end of the agenda, or on Facebook Live streaming. I have a call to order, please. Mr. Flex?
Chris Flex here.
Mr. Creighton?
Jack Creighton here.
Mr. Farag?
David Farag here.
Mr. Brady?
Paul Brady, present.
Ellen Mara, present. So I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment? You're not here for public comment? No. Okay. Any public comment online, Kevin? Nope. Okay. We are basically on schedule. So the first up is One Pleasant Street Affordable Housing Configuration. Hi Cassandra, thank you for attending.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Want to take us through this?
Yeah, of course. So for One Pleasant Street, there will be a total of four affordable housing units. It was originally proposed by the developer that they not be split 50/50, but I did receive word this morning that they are looking to split them between two two bedrooms and two one-bedroom units.
Excellent. Excellent. Any comments or questions from anyone here? No. So Chris, what is the motion that we need to make for this?
You have the LAU.
Yes, I have.
Basically to authorize the Chair to sign the LAU denoting two two-bedroom, two one-bedroom units
Okay.
to meet the affordability requirements.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve One Pleasant Street Affordable Housing Configuration, two two-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit?
Two.
Two, two, one bedroom and two two-bedroom.
Right.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Brady. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Cassandra. Next up is 393 CJC Highway Affordable Housing Configuration.
That project, there are a total of 20 total existing units there. There are already some units that are designated as affordable because they are all rentals. We currently have all 20 units on our SHI. The developer is looking to add an additional three deeded affordable units so that three of the present market rate units will now count as affordable units and will be able to go through the lottery process to allow people who qualify to rent them. It's not going to change our SHI at all, but it will put three actual affordable units onto the market.
Thank you. Do you want to speak to it or Mr. Kears?
Sure. Paul Kears. Paul Kears, 39 Old Coach Road. I'm the Chairman of the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, and we're supporting this change on the properties so that they would be deeded properties that will remain for, I believe, 30 years at the lower rate for affordable housing. So these will be truly affordable, similar to the ones you just voted on for One Pleasant Street. So what this is going to do is even though they are, all of them count towards the housing stock, what we really try to achieve is something that's actually affordable. So this actually does that.
And there's been demonstrated need.
Demonstrated need, very much so.
This feels something that's
Correct, yeah.
Right now.
Right. And there's an opportunity for local preference right now within the first 30 days. So as soon as it's executed, the clock starts ticking to when we can get those folks signed up and in there before it goes into the state board.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's very important. So, so as soon as the signature could be done, the next day they could file and start the process. So that's, that's what's critical about this particular aspect.
Any questions?
Comment, wouldn't it be very helpful if we put like an alert on our town website and got the senior center to make sure that people understand that we have this one-time opportunity to get local preference?
You can. We already have a number of applications for that
Oh, good.
facility already. So it's, it's already somewhat of a waiting list.
Oh, good.
Do have people waiting to get in there. So we're hoping to get them in there by January 1st, you know, somewhere in that area, right? Right quick. So, so that's, that's where we are. So I want to thank you all for your dedicated support on affordable house and especially to the Town Manager, Chris Senior, for holding out on One Pleasant Street. That's been a long road for us on that particular property. So having those two bedrooms on those two units are very important to families that that desperately need it, you know. So we thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So let's see if I can get this motion correct. I have a motion to approve the addition of three affordable housing units, 390 CJC Highway. So moved, Mr. Brady, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll get whatever needs to be signed, signed tonight.
That would be true.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. Okay, next up, licenses and permits. We are a little bit ahead of schedule, a shame. But I see the applicant is here. You want to come up?
Sure will.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
My name?
Yes.
Warren. Well, and you want my phone, I mean, my home address?
Yes, please.
50 Bugania from Marshfield.
Okay, thank you. So you're here.
You want to speak into microphone? Oh, hello. Is it working?
There's a button you can turn it on.
Oh, I see it. I got it.
Yep.
Okay, let me check it out. Yeah.
Yeah. It just, it picks up on the, on the recording.
Oh, okay.
People at home. We can hear you, but it's sort of recording. So so this is a continuation from the original change of manager application. I believe that Tracy, everything's been worked out with Chief Quigley and the owners?
Yes, and the state.
And the state and everything is fine. Okay. Is Chief on?
Yep.
Thank you. Hi Chief, thank you for joining us.
Hey there, sorry. Yeah, everything's great. We, we worked it out. I spoke to the owners and all the paperwork at the state level is split away, so we're good to go.
Okay. And just for our own edification, so it's not improper to have an owner who lives out of state?
If you file the correct paperwork.
Okay. Okay. So it's all
Yeah, the paperwork was not accurate and the application was not accurate. That's since been rectified.
Okay, great. And so you understand all of the responsibilities of being a manager?
Yes.
Cycle 40 hours a week?
Right.
And having everyone tip certified and all of that. Okay. Does anyone have any questions? None? So Chief, in your estimation, good to go? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the change in manager to Mr. Warren Hipwell for Lenny's Hideaway?
So moved. Or second?
Okay, so Mr. Brady moved it, Mr. Creighton seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You're all set.
Well, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Sorry, thanks good.
It's easy. Okay, so next up, this is a little bit more tedious. This is the annual license renewals, and we have a stack, as we can see, sitting next to Mr. Senior, of licenses to sign. So I will go through this and read them. There's several motions, one and a half pages, two and a half pages. So please bear with me and forgive me if I pronounce anything incorrectly. So I'd like a motion to approve the renewal of the following all alcohol on-premise licenses. Celtic Bistro, DBA Via Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery, DBA The Corner Stop, Atlantica Operating LLC, DBA Old Salt House, V&amp;AA Incorporated, DBA Ava Caccina, Noonians Kitchen One LLC, DBA Noonians Kitchen, RB LB Inc., DBA Lenny's Hideaway, Nine Depot Port Inc., DBA The Blue Oar, Stoked Pizza LLC, DBA Stoked Pizza, Vidhand LLC, DBA Golf Tavern. Have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Brady moved it, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next. Can I have a motion to approve the renewal of the following wine and malt on-premises licenses? South Shore Playhouse Associates, DBA South Shore Music Circus, Five South Main Inc., DBA Five South Main, Salty Days Cohasset LLC, DBA Salty Days Fish. Have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Brady seconded by Mr. Creighton. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to approve the renewal of the following in holder all alcohol on-premise license, The Red Lion Inn Operating LLC, DBA The Red Lion Inn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the renewal of the following club all alcohol on-premise licenses, George H. Mealy Post Number 118, The American Legion, Cohasset Golf Club, DBA Cohasset Golf Club, Cohasset Yacht Club?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the renewal of the following retail package all alcohol licenses, whiskey, wine, ink, DBA whiskey and wine, Yoji Raj Corp, DBA Curtis Liquors, Sanjin Enterprises LLC, DBA Cohasset Wine and Spirits?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the renewal of the following retail package wine and malt licenses, Mulaney's Fish Market, Barrel &amp; Vine LLC, DBA Barrel &amp; Vine, The Barrel at Cohasset LLC, DBA The Barrel. Why do we have that twice?
One's a package, sure. We disturb mall and one is the barrel in the village. It's two, it's two different.
Oh, there's two different barrels. Okay. Okay. Thank you. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the renewal of the following, following common visual licenses, Celtic Bistro Corporation, DBA Via Bistro, The Corner Stop Eatery, DBA The Corner Stop, V&amp;AA Incorporated, DBA Ava Caccina, Noonians Kitchen One LLC, DBA Noonians Kitchen, RB LB Inc., DBA Lenny's Hideaway, Nine Depot Inc., DBA The Blue Oar, Salty Days Cohasset, Five South Main, South Shore Playhouse Associates, DBA South Shore Music Circus, George H. Mealy Post Number 118, The American Legion, Atlantic Operating LLC, DBA Old Salt House, The Barrel at Cohasset LLC, DBA The Barrel, Stoked Pizza LLC, DBA Stoked Pizza, Vidan LLC, DBA Golf Tavern, The Red Lion Inn Operating LLC, DBA The Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Pizza House, Cohasset Golf Club, Atlantic Bagel, Cheap Donuts LLC, King Donuts LLC, French Memories, JJ's Dairy Hut, Olympus Grill, Starbucks, Pill Pizza, 3A Pizza and Grill, DBA 3A Pizza and Grill, Sol Quench LLC, DBA Quench Juicery.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the renewal of the following local entertainment licenses? Entertainment license licenses, The Red Lion Inn Operating LLC, DBA The Red Lion Inn, RB LB Inc., DBA Lenny's Hideaway, Nine Depot Inc., DBA The Blue Oar, South Shore Playhouse Associates, DBA South Shore Music Circus, George H. Mealy Post Number 118, The American Legion, Corner Stop Eatery, DBA The Corner Stop, Celtic Bistro Corporation, DBA Via Bistro, Noonians Kitchen One LLC, DBA Noonians Kitchen, Cohasset Golf Club, Noonians Kitchen One LLC. We have two for that, Tracy?
Oh, that's, that's my bad.
Okay. So we'll end that motion with Cohasset Golf Club. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the renewal of the class, the following Class 1 and Class 2 Car Sales New and Used Vehicles licenses, WN Motors Inc., DBA Coastal Nissan, 742 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Cohasset Imports 508 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Brady, second?
Second.
Mr. Flex, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Finally, move to approve the renewal of the following Class 2 Car Sales Used Vehicle licenses, CBK Auto Jeffrey Pinkus 547 Beechwood Street, Aristocrat Auto and Truck Sales, Joseph Rosano 105 Ripley Road, Rattenberry DBA, Rattenberry Auto Works, Cohasset Auto Sales Jafar Nadeem.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are zipping right along. Okay. I don't know if you guys want to start signing, signing those and we're quite ahead of schedule. Do you want to take a minute and sign everything?
No, let's just keep
Keep cracking. Okay, special town meeting, follow-up on Article 9, next steps, Mr. Senior.
So there's a memo that Tracy handed out, some quick updates. So let me explain how this is going to work. Now that Home Rule Petition has been passed, going to work with the Clerk's Office to get a certified copy of that with the proposed legislation filed with legislature legislators, Representative Skinner, Senator O'Connor, they will then file that on behalf in January from the new session of last legislature. And then the, will be officially the bill number at that point, so we will track. So one of the things we'll do once we get that bill number is let all of you know what it is. You can go to this, in a memo, and I'll send that with the track, be on the OneDrive too for you tomorrow. There's a, there's a link and you can just literally plug in the bill number and track it. So what will happen is they'll get the materials, they'll work with them, and what will happen is it will be assigned to a committee. I don't know what committee necessarily has to transition over this.
Yeah.
They'll let us know. And then the committee will determine what more needs. If they need testimony, whether it's written or, or materials or if there is an actual hearing and there's not a whole series hearings, then we work with the board to determine who would actually go. Sometimes those are done virtually. Sometimes they're done by last, last, this was a person. But again, every committee's different. And again, that, that could, that may not happen for many months. It depends on the flow of legislation and it's going to happen. The goal will be to get it filed right away though, in January and then just be
Okay. Yeah, I received a correspondence from Joan Moschino, offering her support. I'm trying to think of who else might have been on that.
I did.
Oh, you ought to too. Here. Thank you. Yes, lots more. Yeah, so she said, once the town clerk certifies the Warren article, send along all the information. We could file the Home Rule Petition when you are ready.
There's a lot of paper.
A lot, lot of paperwork. Shocking for a governmental application. All right. Does anyone have any questions on that? So, I mean, it could, it could happen in we'll, we'll On sign, yeah. It could happen quickly or could happen, it could be at the end of the legislative, legislative agenda. We don't, we don't know.
Yeah, the, it really does depend. When we, last time we went through to this extent, we asked for authority to, to have, or authority for investments for certain funds. For, and we ended up doing a hearing. There was actually a hearing and we went up and presented materials and then we ended up going back and forth with their, with the council on the bill. So in this case, I know that it could happen fairly quickly and could take a long time. That said, Representative Skinner and Senator O'Connor's officers will be managing. That's how they, they'll, they'll file it and they'll, they'll be working with whatever committee happens to handle.
If, so if, if there are hearings, and I'm, I'm just going to flip the coin on this, could people who are against this go and, and testify in those hearings?
If you can attend, whether or not the legislature hears you. I mean, there's usually an open comment period. You can comment on the situation. And people can always write letters to their
Right.
Service will move unanimously by time of any unexpected. Has position is supportive. But individuals can certainly
Okay.
You know, send letters.
Okay. All right.
Typically, again, it's on the town or the app, the movement to help the mover to get more information if it's needed.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
But I'd say the presentation that Cassandra gave for some reasons for it might want to get a few of those bullet points and have it go to the legislators. So if they do bump into whoever, whatever committee this ends up on, if they do bump into the chairman of that committee, they at least have a couple bullet points of why Cohasset needs it. Or when it starts to languish in committee, at some point, they can, they have a, you know, say, what about that legislation? Go from there.
Yeah.
But she had a good presentation on the reasons why, so.
Yeah, I agree. Good idea. Okay. Well, we'll look forward to that and we'll, after the, after the new year, we'll touch base with Representative Moschino and let her know where we are getting, getting her every, everything. It goes, it goes there first and then the Senate or just to the
I, I, I'm not sure who's going to take the lead on this. But we'll get them both the packets, I guess. And they'll figure it out. Usually it's filed in one house and it leads to one house. It's a lot of joint legislative committees.
Yep.
Two and seven houses. I don't know how figure that out.
Okay. Okay, and I wonder, I know, I know Citro was talking about petitioning for more as well. So I wonder where they are in the process. Yeah.
In Marshfield just did as well. I think they were just approved after finishing fighting for it.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not uncommon for I think it's the Boston list, you know.
Right, right. I wonder to my colleagues here, you know, we have alcohol regulations, but we don't have a policy and, and we have been, for the most part, exercising if, if an application, application is complete and ready to go, we've been approving it, you know, pretty perfunctory. And I, I don't know if maybe a policy, Boston has a policy where, because well, it's not applicable here, but, but they're designating the licenses by neighborhood so that every neighborhood within the city of Boston gets a certain amount of the, the 232 new licenses within the area. And I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if having a policy about license, license approval should be something we want to explore. Thoughts, anybody?
I'm not sure Boston's is a policy as much as a political decision, but I think it's nice to have some guidelines. And I don't know what they would be, but it can get very, very contentious and as we have seen, when you start running short. Fortunately, we, our licenses can't be sold, which simplifies things, but I don't know. We, we might well ask people what they think, get a feeling if people are, do we want to say like residential neighborhoods are so close to a residential neighborhood? We want to say you can't be across the street from the school or police station or whatever. I don't know. I think it's worth exploring. It's a good idea to bring it up.
Mr. Brady?
Well, during the last one, my thoughts were how far along construction, not behind the curve. By guaranteed that something's going to open within a period of time. I'd say a timeframe before they come up for the board. They've done the planning group. It's not another necessary group was they've started. We have those licenses and restaurants now. License, that was my only pushback. You know. Quite of I could have any license. But I still think, again, I'm glad we'll find, should have some guidelines as far as instruction, how far along the line. Done, gone through it, just beaten up and fall by the curve as far as getting
Yeah. Well, he, you know, I'm, I'm loathe to assign homework, but you know, maybe when we have free time, we can all, you know, surf some other municipal websites, see, see if anyone has, like, has a policy. Maybe they don't. Maybe there's no need for policy, but it just, it struck my mind when I read the article about Boston establishing a policy for neighborhoods. I thought it was interesting. Okay.
The, the actual regulations have been in place for about 10 years, so it's, it wouldn't be a bad idea to kind of freshen up on them either. There might be some things that the board might want to ask about or talk about too. So it's always healthy to do that. Because I think there's been some things in there that we've stumbled on a couple of times, nothing major, but if you can't think of everything, you first run into a
Okay. Okay, great. Next set date for annual town meeting, 2025 and the elections?
So the recommendation, we cleared the dates and we cleared all the key players and cleared the council and operator at the schools for a date of May 12th. That's the second on the day of May with the election following Saturday, the 17th. Historic challenges that it used to always end up on Mother's Day weekend. This takes it away from Mother's Day weekend with the, the, the election was off on that Saturday before Mother's Day weekend. Also, plus it's just one extra week, which is not a bad thing right now. We, we historically have the first weekend payment. Firewalls allow great flexibility. Last year was in June, but typically we go the first or the early part of May is so that would be, and I distributed it as a draft cap, which also be up on, on the, the current plan would be to have a presentation on FY26, Dr. Capitol Plan is in the board on January 7th. You'll get that in advance and then there'll be a presentation about the projects in that, where that's going. And then on February 4th, we do FY26, operating budget presentation. And more elaborate than the town passed. And that gives right through the end of, very beginning of you'd have us all done with it gives us a little time to get the 20th issued. So Patriots Day is the 21st. So we'll have two weeks. So it's not going to be jumping right.
So I, I know, Chris, you, you and I, Michelle and Paul discussed in our last agenda meeting, January 7th with Capitol. I got a call today from Corey and he doesn't think they're going to be, this, this isn't a joint meeting. No, no. So this is just an overview of where we are on the 10-year. Yeah, because he would rather, Capitol would rather get more buttoned up on Capitol and then circle back with us at a later date.
Yeah, the plan would be that, so we've been trying to get the boards, I mean, when the board sets, this board, this select works policy on a lot of things. And we've started, we've tried in the last couple of years to get the Capitol Plan into the board first, as a first cut. Because there might be some priorities that, that you, you know, or maybe want to prioritize. Want to make sure we're hitting some key targets. That's also good just to socialize it early. Now, some of the projects have already been socialized to this thing. There's a couple of big things. There's touching on the RTF. And so there's some things I think want to talk about.
Okay.
Again, then Capitol will just jump right in and all that, right, the projects. They'll circle up the plan. The, the chapters are going to be done about, by the beginning of March. That's two months later.
Okay.
So that they can circle back with advisory and you folks and you can
And have one final. Okay, okay. That, that sounds good. Does anyone have any questions about a, the town, annual town meeting date, an election date?
The only thing I was trying to look at and I couldn't find it on my, on my phone was when is first communion for St. Anthony's? I know with the May 17th were outside of graduation, which is good.
St. Anthony's, Brian, Texas. I don't know if so far as. So for annual town, is, is May 12th a Saturday or a Monday?
So May 12th is a Monday basis.
It's a Saturday. Okay. Okay. So, so even if, if there is first communion on May 17th, I mean, there is in-person voting and it's open all day.
So we, since the legislative assisting election forums, there's a whole week of in-person absentee voting before the town. You can always vote absentee anyway beyond that. So there'll, there'll be a whole week of, literally five, four and a half days of my turn to come in and vote before the actual
Will we be able to do the election? Will we be able to do the election at one of those schools?
Um, I think that's the plan. I think the plan is to have it at your hill, because it's on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I, I believe that's the explanation.
Okay.
There's only one election on the books right now for twenty-five. And that's it, because there's no state election on here. Unless it's a vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah, isn't that, I think we're good. I'm glad to see it's back in May.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, it's loose in the right month and everything else. That was the only question I had.
Okay, so, I believe this is a vote. Yep, election and vote. So can I have a motion to approve May, Monday, May twelfth for annual town meeting and Saturday, May seventeenth for the annual town election? Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Okay, so we will. You'll continue to update this schedule, the. The planning calendar as things evolve, because there's a couple of TBDs in here.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure where the school's, what the school's calendar is at this point, I have to talk to the superintendent. But again, we have. Almost three, four months to, to get through stuff and then of course.
Okay.
As long as I look, I can't, I can't say we have leeway constraints.
We have no leeway. I have not talked to Mrs. Estino, Chair of the Advisory Committee, about a joint meeting on the budgets. So everyone knows, we were talking about having a full departmental budget review as one meeting. And having every department had come in and present together. I don't know if advisory with nine people is going to want to do that because they all, they tend to have a lot of questions or not. But I wanted to take one meeting for us to go through every department budget and just have that be the only agenda item. And you have that for February fourth? Okay. Okay. All right, excellent. All right, next up, financial policies, reserve policies, discussion and next steps. So in your packet and I sent out by email, so back. In, well, twenty twelve or leading up to twenty twelve. The town had found itself in some rather dire situations and financial situations and came up with a financial management policies. That had, were adopted, approved by the select board and improved at town meeting. And then in twenty sixteen, developed reserve policies for the general reserve fund, for the stabilization fund. Undesignated fund balance, free cash and reserve policies for transfers out. And on a sign, there are a lot of different things here. So I think it's time for us to look, look at these in conjunction with advisory, go through them, make sure they continue to make sense. Based on our ten-year history of good financial experiences. Perhaps, you know, some of the reserves can be increased a little bit. Perhaps there are other stabilization funds we might want to look at or reserve funds we want to look at. I don't expect, obviously, no, no voting today, but, but this might be a small working group of select board and Capitol. And I'm sorry, and advisory to kind of take a look at and do a deep dive on. I, I believe Capitol is interested in having a more defined free cash policy. In terms of, you know, percentages going to certain places. That kind of negates sometimes what free cash is for. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this?
I think it's a great idea and thank you, Ellen, for bringing it to our attention. I think it's time that we update this and I can think of two citizens. Had experience in this, I haven't talked to. Ooh. I haven't talked to them about it, but we have some retired top-level banking officials who live in town and have an interest in public. We, the PEB, Tim Davis, has done a very, very good job. And this is something that requires getting down into the nitty-gritty. So, and then with the select board. And somebody from Capitol Budget and Advisory, I think makes a good point. Because some of those numbers, I went through them briefly and they are a little bit out of date, but I think the concept is there. So it's, thank you, Ellen, for bringing it to our attention.
Anyone else?
I reviewed it and I, I guess it would be not just updating the numbers to refresh them, but also where do our capital stabilization funds come in? To play with these when it talks about capital, because they weren't there at the time when this was made in two twelve. And then, so it would be a matter of updating the numbers, making sure we have the right categories and, and then go from there. And then also on the, on like the reserves that there was going to be for the advisory board, to see if that number, you know, should be. Go up, down or in between and, and just, you know, refresh everything to make sure it fits in with the current budget terms that we have now.
Right, right. And on, on the advisory, I mean, it's dated, so, you know, it's through FY twenty-one, so we're three years beyond the transfers in allocations. Anyone else? Okay, so. I'll touch base with advisory, see if they want to handle it on a, on a small joint subcommittee basis. And after the new year, we'll, we'll take a look at this. Kind of hard to do it when we're just about to handle budgeting. So this would really be more for FY twenty-six and, and going forward. Okay, town manager update?
Wanted to thank everybody who participated last Saturday for the tree lighting and the holiday stroll. Selectmen, Miss Grady and Creighton were there, so thank you for attending, and a lot of people were there. Weather was good, it was cold, but it felt good and facilities, as usual, did an awesome job with lights. They even got some staff to help participate and get some trees hung with lights. I think they had a record number of actual lights on the tree, which I think if you looked at it, you could see. So they had a fun time with it. Some of the members actually had their families down, which was nice, Nick and Jake brought their kids. And, and again, we had the soccer team, boys, the champion high school soccer team. It was, it was a nice night and as I walked around the village afterwards, it was full. There were people having fun and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of families, a lot of folks in general. Good at eating and drumming your way from one end to the other or festively. There were lots of great organizations out, there was great entertainment. And so I think it was something for everybody and again, thanks to facilities, thanks to everybody who came, thanks to the chamber for their partnership in this and. For to future events like that. And I just want to say, because we're, this is the last meeting before the holidays, I want to wish everyone a healthy and happy holiday season. And on behalf of myself and our entire staff, a Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to all.
Thank you. Okay, select board comments, Mr. Plax?
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grady?
Want to wish everybody on the board, the town, town manager, all town staff, just Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, safest and happiest holidays.
Mr. Creighton?
I would like to kind of second what our town manager said about the tremendous performance of our town employees. That was a tremendous stroll. The Chamber of Commerce made it possible along with help from the town. There were people all over the place, all kinds of young kids lighting the Christmas tree. It was a very, very well done and I think Cohasset really stepped to the forefront, showing what a wonderful town that we live in. And Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and whatever else for everybody, thanks.
Mr. Farag?
Thank you. I'm like, did make it in November, selectmen comments, and I know it came out in the late fall, but Boston Magazine does a rating every year of all the different school systems based upon. Their MCAS rating, it wasn't identical, Cohasset was number fourteen in the state, going up from number thirty-five. And it is the, it is the number one school in the South Shore, head of Hingham, Duxbury, you name it. When it came to English in the MCAS, Cohasset was number five in the state of, of beating everyone out. So there, there's a lot of good things going on at the schools and so congratulations to obviously the students who put in the work, the teachers, all the paraprofessionals, professionals at the school. And of course, the parents help the kids with the homework when they come, when they come home from school. So it's a, it's a great thing, because we've always talked about having a top twenty school system, going back almost thirty years to kind of keep grass on the top twenty and it is now. So secondarily, since it's the last, or the end of the year, want to wish everybody on the board, the town hall staff and everyone. Of Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and Happy Holidays and, and looking forward to the board in twenty twenty-five, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess it's my turn. I will echo all of my colleagues' comments. I wish everyone a joyous holiday season and a healthy and prosperous and calm new year. And to my colleagues, you know, we have, we have a lot, we can, we have a lot that's going on, a lot. To accomplish in the second half. I would like to schedule a workshop so we can revisit our goals, perhaps add new goals, take goals off that, that have been completed. And, and see where we are. I'll send out a note about availability for sometime at the end of January, in between, this would be a third meeting in between our regularly scheduled meetings. And that's, that's all I, all I have. Thank you to the town staff, to Kevin, to Tracy, Michelle and everybody who worked so hard to make our meetings as good as they are on the broadcasting. I know it's not easy on multiple platforms, getting everything so it could be heard clearly. It's important. So that's it. So now we have approval of minutes of December third, twenty twenty-four. And anyone have any comments on, on the minutes? Nope.
I have a comment on minutes in general. There's been some questions about procedures and the policies of minutes, which. Procedures and policies on the minutes, which I think need to be established and until such time, we have the assurance that it's all done properly. I'm going to not vote on, through with the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of December.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, there's no topics reasonably anticipated, so can I have a motion to adjourn at seven forty-two PM?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.